Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the common council to order. I will ask the clerk to take a quick roll call.
Elder Pris and Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
She is excused.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitali.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
She's excused.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Eight present, two excused.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Lysick.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to move on to item D on our agendas. We have seven items for public hearing this evening. And guessing by the crowd, I'm going to guess we have people here for at least one of the items, if not several of the items. So the format we have is he will go through the presentation. We will then take questions or comments from the council members. Then we will turn it over to the public if there are items that you wish to speak on. We do ask that you give us your name and your address for our official record before your comments. And I know a lot of you have signed in, but if you haven't, please sign in with your name and address as well. And if there's a way, if a lot of you are here for one thing, if you could potentially maybe appoint one or two people to speak for the group rather than have several people come up and express the same opinions that might be beneficial in just keeping things moving this evening. So we will open up with, I'll ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution for a special use permit for a playground use to be located at 2320-34 South 79th Street.
Mr. Share.
First, this evening is for St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School. They are interested in constructing a playground on three residential lots just south of the, just south of the school and the 2300 block of 79th Street. The three lots are currently occupied by duplexes. There's owned RB2 residence district. And what's happening here is basically the St. Paul's decided they want to demolish the three, the three homes that they own and install a playground. The playground would be accessory to the church and school. However, you know, the, the expansion or the change in use is considered a special use within our zoning ordinance. This is the existing St. Paul's playground area, which consists of a former alleyway, city alleyway, which was vacated years ago. They also store their refuse within this area, within a portion of this alley. But this is where the kids currently play, just south of the school. The three duplexes are then just south of this alleyway. This is a site plan view showing the, the area of work. It consists of about 19,000 square feet. And the proposed would be to install a rubberized surface for playground equipment, some wood chips under the swings. And then the existing alley would be resurfaced with blacktop. And then the remainder of the site would be grass. There will be a perimeter decorative fence around the property. The, an ornamental variety facing 79th Street at about four feet tall. And then the other three sides facing the alley and then to the south, it would be, would be chain link, a black vinyl coated chain link fence, again four feet tall. There will also be landscaping to screen the southern, the southern extent of the property. The fence in this case will be set back roughly about five feet from the property line on all sides. This is a rendering of the, of the playground concept that they'd like to install. It consists of, again, swings, the jungle gym area, a Gaga ball circle. That's the circle circular area you see, somewhat like a kickball game for a small group of people. But interactive, interactive area for kids, it would be open during the, during the daytime hours when school is in session. And then afterward, it would be closed. We did conduct a neighborhood meeting on October 20th. There were a number of neighbors here that were present. Everyone had, in consensus, was, was in consensus with closing the playground after school hours. The south neighbor wanted a setback to the fence, which is achieved in the site plan. And then some of the neighbors didn't like the idea or the potential of children playing or the sounds that are made by children playing. So those were the general comments that we received from the neighborhood. To date, though, the planning commission took this up on the 27th of, of October. They did recommend approval of the, of the use and of the site landscaping plans that were presented. There have been two neighborhood meetings to date. One was hosted by St. Paul's back in August, and then the other, more recently in October, by the city here in this room. And then there was also a publication that was posted in the official paper. And then property owners within 200 feet were notified of the proposed use. So that more or less concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Share. Are there any questions from the members of the common council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Weigel.
It's not so much a question. It's just a comment on the plan commission meeting. I was, I was at the plan commission meeting and, and yes, the plan commission did approve this. But I think the discussion was pretty clear that their approval was based on the look and feel of the playground itself, not on the policy question of whether the playground should be there. I mean, the tax question was brought up, and that's clearly a choice for the council to make. So I just want everybody to understand that although the plan commission did approve it, that was not a policy decision on their part. That's not their role. The policy decision is up to us. Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Alderman Stefanski.
Also, in regards to the meeting that was held, taxes were brought up and these three properties will go off the tax roll once they get torn down, which will then put a burden on the rest of the city of West Dallas to cover those. Also, the church has put in their bulletin that if they had the money, if they have money, they want to build a parking lot. So the two that they already have existing on the other side that they own, they want to acquire a third. They would also then take those three properties off, which would then be a tax burden to residents. So just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine. Just a, just a clarification on what Alderman Stefanski was talking about. This meeting tonight is strictly about a playground. Any possibility of a parking lot lies in the future and is, has not been presented formally, is not part of our discussion tonight. I think, I, I know that in my mind, I'm pretty clear on, on the thoughts on a parking lot. But I just want everybody to understand that we're not talking about a parking lot tonight. Tonight's discussion is strictly on a playground.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Hearing none, then I will ask if there are any comments or questions from the members of the audience. And you can use our podium up here on your left to address us. And as I said earlier, please give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening. James Larson, 2345 South 80th Street. I simply wanted to know if this was going to be lit in the evening.
Not, no. It, it is not going to be open after, after hours.
The lighting, however, is what I'm asking about?
The lighting?
Miss, I understand you.
The lighting, yeah. So it's, it's not going to be open during the dark, when it's dark out. So it will not be illuminated.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm Scott Stitchin. I'm the property south to this. They are going to give me a five foot little bump. Is there going to be a chain link fence between mine? I heard there's going to be a nice decorative towards the front, but a chain link down my side?
The current proposal is for a decorative fence along 79th Street.
Okay.
And then the chain link fence is a black vinyl coated chain link is also proposed for the alley frontage as well as the south propeller. So you would, I guess currently the proposal is for a chain link budding your, your property.
Okay.
I mean, we do, we do have representatives of the church here this evening, too. That could be perhaps, you could speak with them.
I would like to see something a little nicer down my side would be nice. As far as the alley, you don't really see that.
Right.
Are you guys going to keep the dumpsters hidden behind that wall? Are they going to go out to where everybody can see them now?
Well, our typical requirement for dumpsters is that be four sided enclosure. So whether they're kept in, you know, kept out of sight, out of mind, or, you know, that'll be noted on the site plan. Yeah.
All right. That's about all I got. I, I can live with that if that's what's going to happen.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the audience on public
Harold Bender, 2367 South 118th Street, West Alice. Dear Mayor Devine, members of the common council, community members and guests, I want to begin by saying that I'm very thankful for the direction, the leadership of the city of West Alice has taken over the past several years, strengthening our community and increasing the quality of life in West Alice is truly making a difference. I truly appreciate the changes that I've seen, especially in the last six to eight years. The question I would put before you is this, is the playground project of St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School in line with that vision of the leadership of West Alice, or contrary to it? I can tell you that for 150 students at our school, it would clearly increase the quality of life, as you've seen the playground that they have to play on right now. And I believe our neighbors as well. Nearly half of our students are citizens of the city of West Alice. Studies have shown that access to playing at recess is an important part, not only of the physical growth of children, but also the relational and emotional development of children. Our students are quite limited without a full playground to play on. Approval of this project would certainly increase the quality of their lives. Our school programs also stress loving our neighbors as ourselves and being good citizens. And so I would put forth that St. Paul's is a blessing to the community of West Alice as an organization. I know, as has been mentioned, there are some concerns about the loss of tax revenue. Just under $6,000 of taxes come to the city from those three homes to be demolished. Compare that to the investment in our community that the members of St. Paul's are making. When you consider the value of the three homes, the cost of demolition, and the building costs of a modern playground, St. Paul's members are investing $900,000 or so in this project with no tax dollars being spent for this improvement in the quality of life. While I'm not well versed in the legalities of the situation, I have been made aware of a federal law that does not allow governmental entities to prohibit churches from using their property for valid purposes simply for the loss of tax revenue. So I would put to you that there is a legal and ethical question at stake in whatever decision that you make. Finally, though, I would rather appeal to you as to what these United States of America are about, or at least what our founding fathers thought. Our constitution states that we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. What people will be served by the decision you make? Approval will certainly serve the people and students of St. Paul's, and I believe our neighbors down the road as well. Who would be served by denying the project? would be served by denying the project? So as you ponder that, please remember that you were elected as servants of the people, not guardians of the treasury. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address?
Jack Berkey, 8536 West Arthur Place. I'm also the principal of the school. Uh, a lot of what I had prepared echoes what, uh, pastor has mentioned, so I, he saves me the time and you the time. Uh, but if you Google the benefits of a playground, uh, you'll find dozens of sites, scientific studies, I should say, um, extolling the virtues of having a playground available for school-aged children. Um, never has it been more important than now during the pandemic, when, uh, all kinds of limitations are put on social distancing and what kids are available or allowed to do and not do, and, uh, to get them outside is more important than ever. Um, I don't consider playing in an alley as, um, getting our kids outside, you know, as compared to what you see here. Um, there's all kinds of str, um, data that I could read to you about physical strength and stamina being improved, cognitive, um, benefits, physical benefits, social benefits, sensory benefits, emotional benefits. Um, but just by coincidence, if you saw in Sunday's paper, there's an article, um, called, "Milwaukeeans Turn Concrete School Playgrounds Into Green Spaces," about a movement to do just this, what we're proposing to do, uh, turn concrete into green spaces. Uh, I'll read from that article, just a few lines. "All we had was what I would call a concrete jungle where kids played soccer and tag during recess. Every day, I would have to take kids in to see the nurse for bumps, bruises, and scrapes." Our school doesn't have a nurse. You're looking at the nurse, along with my administrative assistant. Daily, injury, injured kids come in from falling on the concrete, running into the building." Um, he goes on to say, "He had visions of kids coming in from recess with grass stains on their clothes rather than blood stains, a vision that has largely materialized since the completion of the school's revitalization project, which includes a playground with a soft surface like we're proposing the red area would be. Uh, it's that foam, spongy material, and then wood chips under the, the swings. Uh, their project also added garden beds, which is something that we could do, you know, as far as landscaping goes, and native plants, which we're already proposing to do along the southern border. Uh, if anything, he goes on to say, "The pandemic accelerated the interest in our projects." And Milwaukee has passed, uh, a, a number of these projects, and that's, uh, again, in this Sunday's Milwaukee Journal, if any of you would like to, to look that up at some point. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions for the council under public hearing number one? Go ahead.
Evening. My name is Mike Carson. I live at 1201 South 96th Street. I'd like to address you this evening as a parent of, uh, the school. I have, uh, four children, uh, ages 15 to seven. Uh, my oldest is a graduate of St. Paul's, started there as a three-year-old. Uh, all my other three children are currently students there right now. My wife was a student at St. Paul's, uh, graduated from there. We are a second-generation family, one of many at the school. Uh, we are proud to be in West Dallas. You can see from my T-shirt, WA, St. Paul's, West Dallas. You could call it a part of our brand identity. We've been proud to be a part of St., of West Dallas for over 80 years, serving families in the school. I think nonprofit organizations are a vital part of their communities, and St. Paul's, I think, is a good one for West Dallas. And I see a project like this as a good investment in an organization that I think has been a blessing, I know has been a blessing to my family, all of whom live here in West Dallas. We actually moved here in 2007 and have lived here ever since, in two different homes, and one of the main draws to remaining in West Dallas has been being connected with St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School. I would ask you to consider that the value to a city of a piece of land is measured in more than simply the number of property tax dollars that it yields. Organizations like St. Paul's enhance the reputation and profile their communities, which draws people like our family to our city, and we're a living example of this. Uh, in our 15 years, we have paid 15 years of property tax dollars as well, and we remain here in large part due to St. Paul's. I fear a decision to not approve a legitimate expansion of a nonprofit organization's footprint, such as an appropriately sized playground, simply due to a direct loss of property tax revenue would be a chilling message to nonprofit organizations throughout the city. So I respectfully ask you to approve this project. I see it as a good investment for West Dallas, and I know it'd be a blessing to students and families of St. Paul's, many of whom are residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on public hearing number one? Okay. See, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I missed you.
My name is Bruce Enlik, uh, resident, uh, let's see, 2353 South 78th Street. I just wanted to, um, I know it was mentioned, I, I don't know that it's binding, but about the playground being closed in the off, in the non-school hours, and I guess I would really want to see that, I would really want to insist on that, because, uh, say, having been a longtime resident, we've, uh, seen what's happened with, uh, the, okay, ideally, you know, you think, okay, well, the parking lot, the playground is not going to be open in the off-hours, but the, uh, extended family, the packs of kids we've had going up and down that alley. And, uh, say, we've lost, uh, two years ago, we had an $800 bicycle taken from right outside our back door, well, side door, at four o'clock in the afternoon by a kid walking down the alley that clearly didn't belong, you know, was not a, a neighborhood resident. So I, I guess I would really just want to stress that, that I want to see the playground not open in the off-hours. Um, I mean, it's gotten so that when I, I'm working out in the yard and I see, or working in the, in the garage, and I have the big door open, and I see one of these packs of kids coming, I actually close the door. And if I have hand tools out there, I've got a can of pepper spray close at hand. So, just the, you know, my feeling about the number of strangers I see wandering, and they're heading for McCarty Park is what they're doing. They're coming from north of Lincoln, and rather than walk on the street, they go through the alley, and they're just looking. So anyways, just wanted to make that point. Um, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with comments or questions on our first public hearing? Okay, now we will close public hearing number one, and I will ask, uh, the clerk to read out public hearing number two.
Resolution for a special use permit for a community-based residential facility to be located at 8410 West Cleveland Avenue.
Mr. Sher.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a, um, adaptive reuse of an existing, uh, and vacant office building at the corner of 84th and Cleveland Avenue. It was formerly a doctor's office, and then over the years, um, uh, it started out as a one-story building and then became a two-story building, and sort of a patchwork of bricks on the, on the outside of the building. Uh, but it, over the past several years, has been empty. Um, the new owner, um, is proposing to, um, reuse this building for a community living arrangement, which would, um, offer 24/7 care, uh, for people, uh, with advanced age, irreversible, you know, dementia, Alzheimer's, and terminally ill. Um, a similar proposal was, uh, before the council back in 2019 and approved. It was just a, a little bit more dense of a project with, uh, where they were tearing down the existing building and then putting a third, you know, three-story, constructing a three-story building for up to 48, uh, beds. This, um, proposal, uh, will, will offer a community living arrangement, uh, a licensed facility for up to, up to 28 beds. Um, and as such, it's zoned commercial, and under the, uh, city's zoning ordinance within that commercial district, uh, care facilities and multifamily uses are considered, um, special uses. So that's the purpose for our hearing this evening. You'll see in the aerial photograph that it is just west of McCarty Park and just north of, um, a smaller, you know, retail, uh, set of shops, uh, restaurant to the, to the south of Cleveland Avenue. So the existing property owner is Midwest Commercial Funding, um, who will be contracting with, uh, HDG or Health Dimensions Group, who will manage the business. Um, the Health Dimension Group is, uh, does have a number of facilities, uh, throughout the United States, and, uh, within Wisconsin, they operate 100-bed, um, 100 beds that, in, in Mequon, just north of us. So these are the existing conditions. Um, we've got, uh, the 17,000 square foot building. There's about 45 parking stalls around the building. There's pretty much zero landscaping other than the volunteer growth you see in the picture on the bottom. Um, there is an existing cross-axis arrangement between the property to the, to the west and, and this one. That will be maintained as part of this, um, as part of this, uh, site plan and, and operation going forward. Uh, you can see a little bit better on the aerial photogra, aerial photo on the upper right. Um, this property in the middle pretty much relies on, um, the, the entrance, uh, driveway entrances of Cleveland on, on a budding properties on either side of it. And then there is an alley, um, immediately north, uh, that provides some access to, but, so that cross-axis will be maintained with, uh, the neighbor to the west. This is a site plan. Um, so the, the site is a half-acre site, a 17,000 square foot building, which equates to roughly about 5,700 square feet per floor. That's utilizing the basement portion. Um, site access is going to be maintained off of Cleveland Avenue as well as the, uh, 84th Street via the alley into a, a new parking lot for roughly about 20, uh, 22 parking stalls. There are going to be some new landscaping areas introduced to the site, uh, primarily at the corner, as well as some landscape islands closer to the building, and around a patio area in the west side of the building. Um, there is going to be, uh, catch basins are going to be, uh, introduced to the site to manage the stormwater runoff. One of the conditions plan commission is, um, asked the developer to consider is some, um, creative, uh, stormwater management techniques, where perhaps some of these, uh, the landscape island, for instance, on the southeast corner, could be utilized to, uh, capture some of the, the water runoff, and at least hold it for a little while, and then if it were a more significant rain event, there would be overflow tubes to more traditionally, um, dispatch the water. Um, so, um, in terms of parking, 23 parking stalls are, are required. 22 will be provided on-site. Um, again, it's important to note that, you know, residents of this facility do not drive. Um, the parking is really going to be supportive of visitors and that of staff that are, that are working here. And typically, at any given time, there's going to be at least 10 staff people on-site to, uh, manage the facility. Access into the building, uh, there would be doorways on the, uh, east side of the building facing 84th, as well as on the west side of the building. Those would be the more public-facing, um, entrances. There's also a, a staff, uh, ingress egress here on the west side of the, of, of the, uh, building for, uh, taking out the, the garbage, so to speak. Uh, the landscaping plan, there is a pretty nice, uh, landscape plan proposed for the site. There's, uh, this, uh, feature on the west side of the building is actually a light well, which provides, um, uh, light into the, uh, lower level activity area and kitchen area of the dining area of the, of the building. Um, and then there's also a resident patio on the west side of the building, um, over here. These are some, uh, renderings of the proposed new look. Again, just redoing the existing building that's already there, you know, complete facelift on the exterior as well as a complete remodel of the interior, uh, space. It'll feature, um, stone exterior, uh, you know, stonework on the outside, a canopy feature that wraps around the, the buildings east and, uh, south side. There'll be a sill, pre-cast sill as a transition between the, um, siding material and the stone, and then the, the wood-like siding that you see there is actually an engineered wood product, uh, that looks like a wood siding, but it's actually a cementitious, uh, lap siding. And just some exterior, again, elevations submitted by the architect. Part of these windows will be operable, um, the others will be stationary. And we just take a tour, we're starting in the basement and working ourselves up, um, through the second floor of the building. The, the basement area, this will all be serviced via elevator, as well as staircases within the building, but the lower level is primarily going to be dining and activity room area with a kitchen, and then break rooms for staff, and then some back-of-house areas for staff as well. Moving up, uh, to the first floor, uh, we'll have roughly about 11 units, residential units on the first floor. Again, the access points here, an entry point on, facing Cleveland Avenue, another facing, uh, vestibule area facing 84th Street. And then the second floor will feature 12 units and up to 15 residents. Uh, the building will be secure to prevent, uh, people from eloping, uh, you know, so there are modern techniques to keep people, you know, safely within the building, um, and, uh, and not, uh, walking out, um, into the parking lot or, or street. So Plan Commission has reviewed this and recommended approval, um, on, uh, the 27th of October. Um, again, just following the typical Class II requirements, it was published in the, uh, official paper, and, uh, notice within, uh, the people within 200 feet were, were notified. To date, no objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the council members have comments or questions on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Um, Steve, you mentioned a patio for the residents. I don't, that would be fenced in and part of the inside secured area. I don't, I guess I don't see a fence here in any of these renderings.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to that, Marty. Um, so the patio area, the only fence that's proposed is around the light well area to prevent someone from falling in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other area that, on the west side is, uh, there's a building, um, just immediately west of this property line, which does provide some form of a barrier. And then there's a landscaping, um, area both on the north and south sides of that patio. These areas outside would be managed by a staff person with, with residents, um, or a family member with residents. It wouldn't be for someone just to sit out there all alone.
I guess that was my concern. So this, this is the kind of facility that I, I would call a memory care facility, where, as you said, the terminally ill dementia patients, the patients are not, the residents, we'll say, are not allowed to just leave of their own volition. They need to be checked out by somebody or buzzed out. And, and, uh, I guess my concern was that you have a outside resident or patio area for them, but they'd have to be buzzed out to that, I assume, just so they're not wandering around the neighborhood. So.
That, that's a good point, Marty. And yeah, there would be security measures in place by staff and, and management here to keep, you know, to prevent that from happening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Are there any members of the audience with comments or questions on public hearing number two? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read our third public hearing.
Resolution for a special use permit for an automobile, convenience store, and gas station used to be located at 2904 South 84th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Sher.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is, uh, a gas station, uh, actually, it's a currently an empty site, vacant, um, roughly for the past two decades. Um, it was, once upon a time, back in the 50s and 60s, a, a gas station, um, and then later became a real estate office, um, and, and it's been vacant for probably about 25 years or so since. Um, the property is Zoned C3, uh, Community Commercial District. There's a proposal, uh, which we'll get into for a gas station with, uh, convenience store at this site. Uh, the brand name on this is a Foran Amico Gas Station, and, uh, gas stations, convenience stores are considered special uses within this zoning district. So the, the new gas station would feature four, four gas pumps. It would be roughly 3,900 square feet in area. It would include an area for, um, uh, hot food. Uh, no alcohol sales would be present at this location. The hours of operation were originally stated as 24 hours, seven days a week. However, after some, um, meetings with the neighborhood, um, a neighborhood meeting, uh, that was curtailed and, uh, brought back to, uh, 5:00 AM to 11:00, Monday through Saturday, and then Sundays, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the, in terms of a traffic increase, uh, represents under 1% of, uh, of an increase of new trips for, for this area. Most of the trips occurring in this area are already unbeloit around 84th Street. Um, the new trips, in, in fact, would likely be someone from the neighborhood or nearby, um, needs to fill up the, the lawnmower or the, the snowblower, um, and makes a trip up to this location to, to fill up, uh, to, to fill up, where to come in and, and shop for a, a soft drink. So we had roughly about 25 or so people at a neighborhood meeting on October 21st. Most of the, you know, the objections that were heard were, you know, nuisance type of concerns. You know, the, the concern with added sounds, disruption to the enjoyment of your property, vapors from a gas station, so health concerns. The hours of operation were, were a concern and those have since been, you know, scaled back. Landscaping and screening concerns. The refuse location was somewhat of a sticking point and the property owner has since agreed to relocate that. And then, so just some general questions on grading and stormwater. Certainly, no one wants their basement to flood. And so managing stormwater on-site, so it doesn't become a problem for the budding property owners, was, was also discussed. So the proposed plan that was, you know, presented to the Planning Commission and at the neighborhood meeting is shown here. Pretty much includes perimeter landscaping around the site. There are residential properties to the south and to the east. To the north is Capri, to the west is the Village at Manor Park. So the building is roughly about 3,900 square feet in, in the yellow-orange color. And then the canopy will be immediately out in front of that. The gas tanks that you see here, these are underground, but there will also be parking on-site, surface parking stalls, and then also the refuse area here. This refuse enclosure is actually going to be shifted closer to the building to move it further away from a nearby budding residential home. Also, with the perimeter landscaping, the idea here is that there's also going to be a, a solid screen fence around the property in addition to the landscaping. Again, to best, you know, try to buffer nearby residences on, on both the south and to the east. In terms of architectural, the four sides of the building will be, will feature a brick veneer product. And there'll also be that, an engineered wood grain entry feature into the vestibule and to get into the building on the front side, north side of the building. And then the gas pump canopy will also feature brick, about three-quarters of the way up the supports. And then the style of roof on the canopy is to mimic like a hip roof, for a more residential look than you typically see on most gas stations in the metro area. This is the floor plan proposal, the entry being on the north side. And then the, the areas that aren't colored in yellow here are public, public-facing areas for grocery items, merchandise, access to the cooler areas and counter areas for where, where food would be prepared and, and served. So the yellow areas are just basically just sort of your retail clerk office areas, mechanical areas, and then the actual kitchen for food prep. So Plan Commission has recommended approval. There are a number of conditions of approval, many of which have been satisfied by the, by the applicant. Of note, though, there is a, a taller variety of landscaping that's been, that was recommended at the neighborhood meeting and by the Plan Commission for taller trees around the perimeter of the site, again, to sort of buffer those sightlines to the next-door neighbors. And then also to submit a paving and drainage plan to show how they're going to deal with stormwater, so it doesn't become a problem for, for the next-door neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the members of the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Ro.
Steve, at the last Plan Commission meeting, I was of the impression that the applicant was going to close at 10:00 from 11:00. And did you miss that? Or has it been changed? Has he?
I'm sorry, I believe it has changed. It has, it has changed. What do we have in here? Do we have 11? Yeah. It's been, it's been changed to 10:00 PM.
So it's 10:00?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I'll double-check the resolution. I think we've got it correctly in the resolution. I apologize that it's not here in the presentation.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I used to routinely ask the kitchen exhaust fan question, and I haven't lately on new buildings, but it's brought to mind because we're having a little conflict in one of, in my district with a restaurant and their smell. I assume they're going to have deep fryers with the attendant exhaust hood. And the question is, is the fan blowing straight out the wall into a neighbor's backyard? Or is it going to go up vertically through the roof?
The idea is to go straight up through the roof, rather than directing it towards, you know, to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
Steve, I miss, did they submit the drainage plan? Or is that yet to be done?
That's yet to be submitted. So the, the civil plans for the actual runoff pattern and how they're going to manage water on-site is going to be, it, it's a condition of approval and will be submitted at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, the last, of course, 27 years, you know, the, the building, you know, we all know it's been vacant. Even for a couple of years, Capri was down, you know, just as well. But again, you know, I don't think we need a blight property. You know, if, if we had some other businesses come through years back, I mean, it's been 27 years. So, so if somebody, you know, tried to invest most, actually, it would be almost a million dollar to, to follow, I mean, you know, for this type of business. I mean, I don't see really anything wrong, you know. I mean, a gas station's throughout the city, community, they're next to neighbors, you know, and many cases, you know, they put up nice fences, you know. I mean, really, I don't see any issue with that at all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? There's only three of you left. Does anyone want? All right. Seeing none, we will turn it over to see if anyone in the audience has comments or questions on this public hearing. Need the same format. Please come up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Peggy Bitsz, and I live at 8355 West Belloit, which is right next to the proposed gas station and convenience store. And I'd just as soon not have it open up, but all in all, I like the design of the building. It appears to be that the business people that are opening up seem to know the neighborhood well and what they're doing. I just wanted to verify, the hours were changed, not on, on the slide, but they were changed from 5:00 to 10:00, correct? And then what about Sundays? Are they going to still be open till 10:00 or is it 6:00 PM?
Steve, do you remember?
I had talked briefly with the new owners and I don't know what they decided for Sunday.
He's checking.
Just checking for the...
Resolution?
Resolution here, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it is 10 o'clock is the closing time for Sunday as well.
On Sunday?
Oh. All right.
Okay.
And, boy, West Alice rocks. I, with all these new businesses, I hope our taxes will go down, maybe. And also, I'm concerned because my property's right next door and I don't want to be exposed to the people coming in and out of the convenience store pumping gas, unless, of course, it's Yanis, because she could see over a six-foot fence. But they said they'd put a six-foot fence up. I want to make sure that it's level to the building and to the gas pumps and everything so that it's a definite six feet tall. It's not going to slope down, be shorter on one end than the other, because that lot does slope down.
Do you want to handle that one, Steve?
Thank you, Peggy, yes. And that, that will be the, the goal with the, with the grading plan that's going to be submitted. They will have to address the grades on that site, because everything does fall off.
Right.
And, you know, reduce an elevation as you go further south.
So they definitely are going to keep it a solid six feet, because that's the only way I'll, I'll have any security, you know, and privacy is to maintain the six feet.
Yep.
Like I said, if it's a basketball player, they're going to see over six feet anyways, but...
If they, if they do it wrong, Alderman Vitale, you'll be able to see over it.
I won't. That's for sure, man. Don't worry about me at all. I don't want me to see over.
Okay, and I just wanted to bring up, I don't, I, I thought that they...
Oh, the dog didn't like that joke.
Regarding music by the pumps, I thought the pumps were going to be like, not two and two, they were going to just be four and down towards the middle more. But our, I've gone to gas stations where they don't have music, and I've gone to, like, 92nd and Cleveland, they don't have music at that VP. And in the Speedway, they, you know, have music. I personally don't like the music, and since my house is going to be maybe 20 feet from the gas pumps, where I have windows, I'm wondering if they could possibly not have the ga, the music that, along with the gas pumps? I'm just...
That's certainly possible, and it's something that we did build into the resolution as before council tonight about your volume control or being able to turn off the audio if that is a thing on the pumps, so...
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just, just responding, yeah.
That they could, they could turn it down or turn it off?
Yep.
Oh, good. And as far as the, the fence, if they're going to put it up to their property line and I have a fence on my property line, who's going to make sure that there isn't a gap where there's going to be trees growing and weeds and all that? And who would take care of that? Where the two fences meet? Or would that be something where maybe they'd consider talking to me about taking my fence down, which I really don't want to, because it hooks up to the rest of the yard? And it's a cyclone fence and the, the one they're putting up is a white plastic fence, six feet tall? So what if there's a gap there where there's going to be a problem with weeds and trees growing?
I think that's best, we maybe talk perhaps after the public hearings with, with the applicant who's here this evening and just see if we can come up with a solution to that. Yep.
Okay. And the dumpster will have, it'll be enclosed, right?
Correct.
There's going to be walls around it? I guess that's it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions on public hearing number three?
James Larson, 2345 South 80th Street. I originally came here to object to this, but after hearing what I have heard, I, I can see where this would work. My concern was with noise and traffic and disruption to an otherwise very, very quiet neighborhood that's surrounded by quiet business and one restaurant across the street. But you've convinced me those are not, I'm not, I'm not here at this particular moment to object to those, only to say that I don't think we all need constant stimulation with this, with the music and advertising, et cetera, the gas pumps. I find that personally just to be very distracting and unnecessary, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any other audience members have comments on our third public hearing this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close our third public hearing and I will ask the clerk to read out, I believe, four and five together?
Yes. Ordinance to amend the official West Alice zoning map by rezoning property located at 1359 South 84th Street from RB2 Residential District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial submitted by the City West Alice.
Thank you.
And resolution for a special use permit for an automobile convenience store and gas station to be located at 8404 West Greenfield and 1359 South 84th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the two hearing items involve an expanded project area. The, the gas station, which is, which used to be auto-analyzers in the northwest corner of 84th and Greenfield, has been purchased by a developer who wants to put in a gas station, a convenience store. That was before the common council earlier this year. And since that time, he's reached out to one of the property owners to the north and offered to purchase that property. That property to the north is actually Zoned RB2 Residential, Residential District, and it's occupied by a single-family home. So the, the idea is that the gas station developer would purchase that property, demolish it, and then expand the project area for the, the gas station, the new gas station of that corner. So it's a, it's roughly about a 60, 600 square foot, single-family residential lot. And by rezoning it to C2, it would allow for automobile convenience, you know, gas stations. The, the residential lot, as well as some of the other budding lots in that area, it's important to note, are in conformance, they are actually commercial, shown as commercial land uses, so it is in conformance, the rezoning would be in conformance with the 2040 land use plan. So consistency would be achieved in, in a rezoning. And the next item here is for the special use portion of this. Again, that expanded project area is shown in the lower right, which would encompass the two lots. And demolishing, basically demolishing the existing auto-analyzers building, which is about 2,500 square feet, and then purchasing the house to the north, demolishing that, constructing a new 6,200 square foot gas station. And then the, the gas station area, the built, new building, I should say, would also feature two retail tenants to the west side of the new building. The proposed hours are indicated as 5:00 AM to midnight. That's been curtailed from a 24/7 operation to 5:00 AM to midnight. And then the convenience store will sell general groceries, cigarettes, coffee, and there would be a food prep area as well. No alcohol sales will take place from this property. And these are just some other pictures of the existing situation. And now we'll start to get into some of the surrounding context to the west. I should say to the north, you've got a single-family and two-family neighborhood. To the west is a multifamily building. And this is the proposed new site plan, including the single-family lot, which is before, for rezoning as well. Feature roughly about 20-some parking stalls and four pump islands, or up to eight cars. Access points to the site would be changed with one access point on 84th, one on Greenfield Avenue. Refuge area would be on the northwest side of the site, close to the building. And then perimeter landscaping would be installed around all, all four sides of the property. This is a look at the proposed internal area for the gas station convenience store only. There are, there are two other resident, or two other tenant spaces, commercial tenant space to the west, which are unidentified at this point. But this focus here is just purely on the retail convenience area for the gas station. Again, featuring an office and cashier area, food displays and a coffee counter area, small kitchenette for food prep, and then the general merchandise area in gray. These are the, the exterior look of the building, which features, features four-sided architecture, brick, and some concrete masonry around the exterior of the, all four sides. There's an engineered wood product on the, the two corridors into the, into the building, both for the gas station convenience store here and then for the future retail over here. And it'll feature a standing seam metal roof, which is also carried over to the proposed canopy over the pump islands. So Plan Commission has reviewed this and recommended approval on the 27th of October, and properties within, in the neighborhood within 200 feet have been notified and it has been published in the official paper. There have been a couple objections to date. However, those, those objections primarily focus on the traffic volumes, just, I guess, bad behaviors of, of some drivers on both 84th and/or Greenfield Avenue with speeding as you come around a corner or as you're going west. as you're going west on Greenfield Avenue from a two-lane each-way Greenfield Avenue to a tapered-down west of 84th, Greenfield Avenue, people trying to shoot through, you know, at the last minute. So I think it just primarily was focusing on bad driving behaviors, not necessarily this use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the common council have comments on public hearings four or five?
Mayor Devine.
Other person, Keen.
I'll take Marty's cue, the exhaust vent will be going up, not out, towards the west, correct?
Correct, right.
And then I just did wanna address, older woman Grish, who I had received some concerns, again, it was more based upon traffic, cars coming up 84th, trying to merge over. Speaking with the potential owner of this resident, he doesn't want any disturbance, he has a great plan, extra security cameras, he's cognizant that there are residential neighbors around, you know, not taking out the garbage exactly at midnight to wake up all the neighbors. So I did just wanna notate that the owner has been more than willing to listen to the concerns and change what's needed based on the resident's concerns. So I really just wanted that to be notated to the public, that he's very cognizant of wanting to blend in with the community and not have a nuisance gas station that could have crime and other possible issues, and as Steve has said, there's not alcohol being sold at this property. So I think that that has a difference as well.
Mayor Devine. Alderman Stefanski.
I just wanted to get a clarification, I believe last time we talked about this, older woman Ranky brought up about cigarettes being sold there. Was that whole issue with them selling them at Walgreens been resolved that they're allowed to sell there? I thought that was the whole, that they weren't gonna be able to sell them there.
So this, this place, the proposed use here, the gas station, will sell cigarettes, I mean, they're proposing to. However, it's gonna be a very small portion of the business, it'll be only a small display case behind the counter, and only accessible, patron comes in and asks for a pack of cigarettes, for example, the clerk will hand them to him, it's not gonna be, it's not a tobacco retailer. So it's a very small portion, I think it's maybe 100 square feet of the store will be for tobacco-related items. So it doesn't, it doesn't come into the zoning classification of a tobacco retailer, so there isn't that separation clause that we would otherwise have if it were, if that were purely the use here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing four or five?
Hi, Marie Elrich, I'm at 1355 South 84th Street, directly north of that area. And I was just wondering, the length of the building? I have a side door on my house that goes right to my driveway, which would be right next to the building. Is there any privacy past the ends of the building that I don't have? You know, if there's mischief out there, where there are people that would easily be able to get to my back door? Is what I guess my concern is? Just because I've been in the neighborhood for almost 40 years there, in that house, and I just don't want people wandering over from there to me.
Sure, yeah.
So there is a fence indicated along the north property line, and then I believe it does wrap around the backside of the building here to the west.
That's my main concern, is that it would be nice to have a fence of some sort, so they can't go from there to me, so.
Good.
Just a safety concern.
Yep, thank you, you're welcome.
Hi, Beth Miller, I'm at 1327 South 84th Street, so also north of this property. I was just wondering, are the hours till midnight for the convenience store and the gas pumps, or just the gas pumps?
I believe it's both, yeah.
Okay. Because I have some concern with the store being up until midnight, just in that neighborhood, and, you know, the heavy traffic and the noise, the concern about crime.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on these two items for public hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearings four and five. And I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number six.
Ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by rezoning property located at 8530-56 West National Avenue from M1 Manufacturing District and C2 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 Neighborhood Commercial submitted by John P. Chan, Bethesda Lutheran Communities.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a application for, to request a rezoning by developer. Bethesda Lutheran is interested in developing a multifamily development at this site. However, in taking a look at the existing site, it's currently split zone, so you have light industrial zoning and partially commercial zoning. So for any, for any development of this site, it would be best rezoned to C2 in conformance with our comprehensive land use plan, which is shown on the bottom. So the upper slide here, image, is the existing split zoning that's occurring on the site. You can see the frontage being commercial, the backage being light industrial. And then down here on this lower map, you can see the future land use plan, which calls for a mixed-use development, or mixed-use land use classification. Rezoning it to C2 would not only promote multifamily development, but also mixed-use development as a special use. So while we're not reviewing an actual multifamily development this evening, that would be a future submittal before the planning commission and common council. What we are recommending approval of is a rezoning to eliminate the split zoning, and then to rezone this property to, to commercial, C2. This is the existing building that's there today, it's the Clark Oil Building. The planning commission has reviewed this and has recommended approval, and we have not received any objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, any comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Key.
Steve, I know we were looking at potentially doing a traffic study, that hasn't been, has that been completed yet?
Yeah, we just did receive the draft of the traffic study, and that will be coming, coming to you soon.
Wonderful.
Thank you, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments on this item from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number six. And I will ask the clerk to read our seventh and final public hearing this evening.
Ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map, amending section 12.05 for certain properties along the Highway 100 corridor in alignment with the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Tony.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Geron.
So this seventh item and final one is for the rezoning of 51 properties along Highway 100 corridor between Greenfield Avenue and just south of Oklahoma Avenue. So generally, throughout this rezoning, we're proposing to change the zoning from M1 and C4 to C3, though there are a handful of properties that are zoned residential, and we're just cleaning up some of the split zoning, so keeping it all residential. This rezoning is consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan and our future land use map, and is also consistent with last year's Highway 100 corridor study, which calls for a dynamic range of uses. So the main purpose behind the rezoning is to avoid undesirable uses. So going to C3, we would not have, certain uses would not be permitted. Nominal-priced retail stores, also known as dollar stores, outdoor vehicle dealerships, check cashing businesses, kennels, pawn shops, thrift, and some manufacturing uses like material processing, waste and recycling, warehousing, self-storage. And I just also wanted to note that certain uses would still be allowed in C3, for example, vet clinics, medical clinics, hotels, and shopping centers. The rezonings would also allow for denser development, which is great, because we would, this would help to grow the Highway 100 corridor by increasing the maximum floor area ratio, and also removing any required setbacks, for the front, at least. Another purpose of the rezoning would be to remove some of the split-zone properties. While this helps clean up a lot of our zoning map, this, this isn't the best, there are a few cases where split zoning is actually, would actually benefit certain businesses, and I'll get to an example later. So really important to note here is that this would create some non-conforming uses, but some uses, when rezoned, they become legal non-conforming. Those businesses can continue to operate. When that business leaves, the same use can operate in that space if occupancy is within 12 months of the prior business leaving. So for example, you have, say, a dollar store and a strip mall, and that dollar store leaves, the owner of that strip mall can have another dollar store come in, as long as it's within 12 months, so they can come in at the 11th month. But if that one year lapses, then they can't come back in, another dollar store can't come back into the same space. So this is just a look at some of the rezoning maps, working our way from Greenfield down to Oklahoma. And here's a list of the properties. In bold are the affected properties and businesses that would become non-conforming. So we have a couple self-storage spaces, businesses, the Milwaukee County shop, price erecting, a couple check cashing businesses, Dollar Tree, and Able Distributing. Now, we have received four letters of opposition, and I just wanted to remind the council that removing an item from the list of properties to be rezoned is within your authority and does not require us to conduct another public hearing. So first one here is South Town Shopping Center, they are opposing the rezoning from C4 to C3 because it eliminates the ability to lease to dollar stores. They currently have a dollar store in there, so I think their concern is just not being able to replace that business. The former Hub Chrysler site sent us a letter today, the owner doesn't wanna limit their options for any future development. The Menards Store is split-zoned, you can see they have manufacturing in the rear of their area, that's where they have a lot of their building products, their lumberyard. And then they also have a little slice of residential up at the top there. So they just wanna retain their option to sell to a light industrial M1 user. They haven't stated who exactly, but that could be any one of the examples that I gave before of manufacturing uses. And the fourth is Able Distribution at 1650 South 108th Street. About five years ago, common council approved a rezoning ordinance for the site to be split-zoned, and the reason for that was to allow for them to have their showroom in the front of their building, and then in the rear, they would maintain their distribution center. And that could be zoned correctly as light industrial. Ownership has approached us and said that they wanna preserve the current split zone while working with staff on an ordinance amendment to allow for a commercial light industrial flex use. This coincides with a zoning code update that we are, staff is currently working on. And one of the things that we hope to bring forward to council for further discussion is exploring a zoning option to create that commercial light industrial flex use. And then we would work out the intensity and proportion of this mix, and that would vary by commercial district. And the Highway 100 corridor study that was released last year also supports the creation of the flexibility within the zoning ordinance. In the October plant commission meeting, they recommended approval of the rezoning. A lot of the, all of the property owners within 200 feet have been, have received notice, and we have hosted two informational meetings to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the common council on public hearing number seven? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions, comments from the audience on public hearing number seven?
Good evening, Robert Schmidt, 311 East Chicago Street, Milwaukee. Our firm's been developing in West Dallas for the past 23 years. We currently own three properties on Highway 100. We redeveloped the former Borden property site into the Sam's Club and the McDonald's Starbucks in front. We redeveloped the Hub Chrysler site into the Who-Hot AT&amp;T building up there with the AutoZone. We also are in the middle of redeveloping the OfficeMax property. We redid the FNF Tire for Blaze Pizza, and then Spectrum. After Blaze went out, added the Aspen Dell. And most recently, we built the new Cousins Sub on 65th and Greenfield. So we have a long history of corporate citizenship in West Dallas, and we love being here, and we love doing business. So our opposition is for site 51, which Tony has up on the screen. Our unique circumstance is that we have raw land, these other properties, if they have legal non-conforming uses, they can continue to use them, or find replacement tenants. We've owned this for eight and a half years, we've never gotten any traction on the back parcel with getting it redeveloped. We have entertained proposals from some of the uses you're trying to zone out. We've had two car dealership proposals come before us, from the Wild Group and from Carvana. We had a discount retailer originally, which was Goodwill. Ironically, the site to the south where Goodwill is, is not being rezoned to restrict them, but ours is. We've also had a proposal from a pharmaceutical manufacturer to go there. So that's another, it's material processing that would be zoned out. So Tony, can you put up the site, the plan that shows Highway 100, it's sort of in totality at the south end? I just wanna point out one other unique feature of the rezoning map. If you look on the left side, you can see that they've captured every property on the east side of Highway 100, all the way down to the city border. But if you look at the west side, our property sort of sits out there as an island. No properties around us are getting rezoned, including the 50-year-old skating rink, the church that was in the old Goodwill site, the old gas station on the corner. So, you know, nothing's being rezoned around to help us, yet we're being singled out as raw land and having our hands tied. So for that reason, we're requesting that our property be removed from this rezoning process, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brad Dagan, I'm here on behalf of the 1650 South 108th Street Ownership Group. I'm at N19W24400 Riverwood Drive. I appeared at the plan commission, and I also wanted to remind the council that five years ago, I also appeared before you in the plan commission to work with the planning department staff to obtain the split zoning that exists today for the Able property and the Able Building. And I think you can see the result of that, that it's a thriving business with a national company as a tenant in that property. In order to appeal to this particular tenant, first of all, they needed a lot of square feet. They have, you know, approximately 70,000 square feet that they're using, they take up the whole building. It's, I'm here to emphasize that it is a unique property, and I'm going to ask you to observe that after meeting with staff and talking about it, I'm here to ask you to remove this property from the list for rezoning today. I have pledged and have the authority of my client to work with staff to develop that commercial light industrial flex use, which would mirror the current use of that property. It's such a unique property, the building takes up almost the whole lot, there's a small amount of outside storage. There's a small amount of outside storage at the back of the property. And then if you know the area behind this building, it's all M1 manufacturing district. And so the split zoning, although I generally agree that it's not the greatest thing to have, this is the textbook example of why split zoning is a good thing. But I think that zoning can be accommodated by way of the proposal of staff to develop a commercial and light industrial flex use, which would likely be under either the C3 zoning, or that's to be determined, and I'm willing to throw some input into that since I have had some experience at drafting ordinances. So the long and the short of it is, is as you look at this property, you know, five years ago, and five years have gone by, and what we projected and what we had hoped for has come true. This property is a shining star in the community. My clients took off about 35 feet of the old Lackey and Joyce block brick building and put this facade on there, which exactly conforms to the proposed 2040, you know, comprehensive plan for the city, and particularly the Highway 100 corridor. If you look at that 2040 plan, which I did read, and even though it was very long, but I did read it, this property does match exactly what you're looking for along the Highway 100 corridor. You've got the commercial use up front. There's a design studio up front. There's retail up front. And yes, indeed, in the back, there is a distribution center, and there is a contractor entrance around the back, and there is outside storage. But this is a big building, as I mentioned. It's about 70,000 square feet. So ultimately, when we look at the plan objectives for 2040 plan and even the Highway 100 study, this building, as it has been remodeled by my clients, matches those objectives. It creates excellent taxable property value. It's provided a lot of jobs, provided a great facade along Highway 100, superior quality renovations. I think frankly, I was quite impressed with the end result, and I hope you are too. So at the end of the day, my goal here is to ask you to remove that from the list so I can work with staff to either modify the C3 zoning or create this commercial light industrial flex district that would allow my client to continue. If you change this to C3, there's the grave danger of one-third of this building having to be torn down, which would create a huge amount of problems. Obviously, the tax-based loss, certainly a significant loss in value of the property. And the reason for that is it's hard to find a tenant that'll take up this whole building. My client remodeled the whole building to accommodate this size tenant. They're appealing to the national company. This Able is a solid company with a national reputation. They're partnering up with Kohler, another great company. So at the end of the day, this is a unique property. I'm asking you to recognize that and remove it from the list of rezoning for now and allow us to study options so that the comprehensive long-term plan from the 2040 plan can be met, and that we can propose a flex district that would allow, you know, basically to not have the split zoning, which I think staff is trying to get away from split zoning. But I think the flex district could accommodate both my client's needs and the city's goals, and allows us to maintain the value of that property, not just for my clients, but for the tenants and for the city in general. So with that, I thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience have comments on public hearing number seven? Okay. We will close our final public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for being here and participating. Often, we don't have a crowd, and we feel a little lonely, but it's glad to see people taking part in the process. It's good to see the room full. Item E is citizen participation. This is the opportunity for the council to receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Once again, we'll ask you to announce here our name and address, sign in at the podium, and please limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. Council can't take action on the topics because they would not be properly agendized. But does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close. Citizen participation. Item F is the announcement of our standing committees. They will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Item G is the mayor's report, which I printed and left on the printer in my office, so I'm going to try to do it from memory. Just a reminder that this Saturday, there is going to be a food drive by the Community Improvement Foundation at the West Alice Farmers Market to bolster up the supplies for all of our community food pantries. There is also an opportunity to, with your donation, to enter young children to help me light the city Christmas tree this year, which leads me to, and again, the times, I believe, are 11:30 till 2:30. Thank you. And it will overlap with the operation of the farmers market, so there will be farmers and food trucks and coffee things there for people. The Christmas -- Kris-Kindle Market will also be taking place again this year after not taking place last year, and that will be on the same weekend of our Christmas parade, which is December 3rd and 4th. The Kris-Kindle Market will have about 50-plus vendors selling specialty food goods, and there will be some restaurants represented there. I believe West Allian Brewing is working on serving some of their Christmas beer, as well as some other local delicacies and other places from around the state. That takes place on the evening of Friday, December 3rd, and on the day of December 4th. It does wrap up before the Christmas parade for the city, which goes through our downtown, and that starts on the evening of December 4th. And the last thing I had from my memory is that the city's fall leaf pickup was extended. It does end on the 21st of November. So I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but that does conclude the mayor's report. Moving on to item H, are there any alderpersons' reports? Seeing none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of November 2nd, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, standing committee reports.
Yeah, license and health.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes, we have item nine, which has been approved, but the -- if the complete occupancy inspections are completed, otherwise, we can hold that one.
Nine and 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then the other one is item 10, which is the same situation. If all inspections are completed, of course, we can vote on it. Otherwise, we can hold it. Is that correct, Rebecca?
Yes. Item 10 is the only one that has -- they've satisfied all of the inspections. Item number nine has not. So based on the committee's recommendation, I believe they would like to grant item number 10.
And hold item nine.
And hold item nine.
Do you want to make -- hold item nine and approve item 10?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval based on the license and health committee report.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Attorney Decker?
Just because this is a new process, I want to make sure the council's aware of what's going on. The committee is hearing license applications for retail alcohol licenses, and if they feel that the applicant should be granted a license, they're doing so. However, those licenses are going to be held at council until they're able to satisfy any type of occupancy permits, any type of licensure with maybe Health Department or other entities, to ensure that when they are given their alcohol license, they are ready to operate at that time. So that's what's going on here. Number 10 has satisfied those conditions, and that's why the chair has moved for adoption of that one. Number nine has not satisfied those conditions, so it will be held over until the December meeting, and it will appear on another standing report at that time.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. If there's no other discussion.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigl.
I guess I have a question. So that means the soonest that the applicant at item number nine would be granted his license would be the next time we meet.
If they wait until the next regular meeting, yes. In theory, there could be a request for a special meeting.
Right. I understand.
Which would be at the council's discretion whether they want to call that.
Yeah, I understand we could have a special. But I believe in the past, we would have approved it pending that, and then the day after they get their inspections squared away, they could open. But with this new process, they'll have to wait until the full council meets again.
Correct. For legal reasons, the council should not approve a license with conditions upon it.
Okay.
Because there are some negative cases out there if that happens, which I would rather avoid. So that's why this new process will ensure that the city will not be at risk for anything the way it's doing, yet it still allows some flexibility. I think the clerk and I may be presenting something in the future that might also make this even a little more flexible, so we'll see if we can do that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel it's a proper procedures, really. I mean, I think that's the way to go.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's the second?
Oh, who second? Did we second?
Second.
Alderman Keen was the second.
As this came out of committee, there doesn't necessarily need to be a second.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Unseconded.
I'll still put it on there.
All right. And then the vote still counts, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you. Item K, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick.
If there's no objection from any members of the council, I would move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as printed.
No separate action? Is there any discussion? We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Reinkie.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigl.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess. Okay. Public works will come to order. Please note that four of the five members are here tonight. We will start with item 24, an ordinance requiring use of city-issued containers for one, two, and three family residential refuse collection.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 25, resolution 2021-0752, resolution to accept the proposals of McNeeleous Truck and Manufacturing and Cumberland Service Center, Inc., for furnishing and delivering one 2022 McNeeleous model 2016 20-yard refuse packer body for $110,384 and one 2022 crane carrier company LET to dash 46 cab chassis and snowplow package for $173,213 for a total sum of $283,597.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 25, resolution 2021-0753, resolution to authorize the purchase of one Ares Pathfinder TV inspection system mounted in a Ford Transit chassis for a sum of $265,147. Is there any discussion?
I'll move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Basically, could you explain a little bit about this?
Well, it's a jet truck that can check sewers within the city. So Pete and his staff inspect, and they have contracted that service out. I'll let you explain.
Yeah, we spend about $95,000 a year hiring someone with a camera to go through.
So we can do it ourself.
So we can do it ourself. Every other city has one. I mean, we're the only city that doesn't have one right now. And we used to have one, but it stopped working.
Yeah.
We sold it. So we'll be able to do more, probably more televising than we're doing now because we'll have access to it. And emergencies come up, what, weekly now where somebody's plumbing has collapsed or and, you know, we tell them to call a plumber and get a video, but because we don't have the ability to do that. But, I mean, in the future, we can probably handle more emergencies, which happen weekly or every other week or so with collapsing pipes or something.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I just like to bring up the fact that that sewer was built over 100 years ago on 52nd, I believe it is.
A lot of streets.
From Burnham to down the, that's Lincoln, I believe. That's made of bricks.
Yeah, a lot of our sewers were built 110, even 120 years ago.
It's amazing, you know, and those things are still intact.
Right.
Yeah, unbelievable.
But they are starting to collapse.
I mean, of course, in time.
So we need to get, be able to see in there. You can't really jet very well unless you can see what you're jetting. So a lot of times, they've been jetting blind, you know, they can't really tell what they're trying to, what the clog is or what they're trying to get rid of. So we really should have a camera truck.
This will help us to document as well what's in our line as well as potentially coming into our line.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then item 27, which is resolution 2021-0756, resolution to approve an option and land lease agreement proposed to build a monopole communication tower by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC on city-owned land located at 1725 South 76th Street, tax key number 450-9993-004. My notes here, as well as yours, say hold and negotiate further. Is there anything?
So moved.
Okay. But we're going to hold it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
So your options tonight are if the committee wants us to explore this further, then the motion to hold until the next meeting is appropriate. If the city's, the committee is not interested in pursuing this any further, you could simply vote to place on file as well. This is more to gauge the committee's interest in this type of monopole leasing and infrastructure construction. So if there's any questions, I could talk, otherwise I think David.
Alderman Stefanski.
So my question is, what kind of revenue can this bring for the city?
So the initial contract terms are the basic, I guess, contract where it's approximately $12,000.
How much per year?
$12,000 per year.
It's an 85-foot pole where they would have one carrier, AT&amp;T.
There are some, you know, it's initial contract where there might be some items that you could improve upon with Kale and his staff to review as well that can maybe address some of those concerns. But like Kale mentioned, number one is, do you, are you agreeable to have staff pursue and negotiate this monopole that's approximately 85 feet that this carrier, AT&amp;T, can put on, how would you say, for Wi-Fi coverage where they can also lease to other potential carriers and also attach on this monopole. In doing that, they are recommending fenced-in base that's about a 60 by 60 base, 60 feet by 60 feet, and it would be placed on the southern portion of the Little League Field, right next to the water department's storage area. So right now it's vacant.
Yeah, we've done that before, really. I mean, I know, so it's not something, I believe, I think we can move that place on file and, I don't know, even a motion?
Yeah, I mean, a motion to hold it and negotiate further, so.
Hold it and negotiate it. And these 60, you said 60 by 60 foot pads?
Mm-hmm.
Cyclone fence?
Yep.
Barbed wire on top?
No.
Because we don't allow it in the city.
Yep. And that's something that, you know, obviously, we would work with them and.
Okay, well, then we'll.
Identify.
Hold it so we don't act on it then, correct? We'll just.
Motion to hold it.
Right.
Sure, correct. So the motion technically relates to the motion to postpone until the December meeting to have a negotiation. It should be a motion, though, that the committee adopts as a procedural one, just to make sure, because another option would be to place on file and end this thing if the design is just a known, a nonstarter from the beginning. So it's a large pole. It's 85 feet tall. It's a large space. If the council's interested in pursuing it, the motion postpones in order. If you don't, if you're just like, I don't care what you're going to negotiate, I don't want an 80-foot pole in that park. And place on file would be a way to end this before, we still want to waste their time or else's time if the council's not going to consider this on later date.
Well, I knew we couldn't discuss it until I made a motion, so that's why I made a motion.
Correct. And that's exactly why I'm giving the explanation, so now harbor.
So I need to say something.
And this is to hold for?
Yes.
And then my question would be that if you could come back to us, several years back, a long time ago, we had the windmill thing, and they were talking about tipping over, like anybody that had a windmill, if you had a 60-foot windmill, it couldn't hit anything if it fell 60 feet around it. What's within 85 feet of this? I know it's a railroad track to the south. Is it, it's our building?
Railroad tracks, our building.
Our building.
Potentially, I'd have to measure it out.
I didn't mean for you to be like, oh, yeah, Roat. It's like, I didn't know you'd do it for memory, but I'm just curious if we're clear there.
Northern section is the One Diamond.
It would hit the, it would hit the We Energies Transformers, I guess.
Okay, that would be a light show.
Of course, you had that last year.
What's that?
Didn't something happen?
Yes, the oil reservoir, the motor round, it blew up.
But there are no homes.
Right, okay, thank you.
And my understanding is the way these monopoles are constructed, like the freeway would be coming down at the same time as this thing would be coming down.
So what would be coming down?
So the freeway would be coming down at the same time. They're constructed with quite strong materials.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Ranky.
Have any negotiations taken place previously? I mean, about this?
Right now, there's an introductory offer on the table, and that's it. They have not responded yet to that offer.
Their introductory offer.
Correct.
So obviously, they're not going to.
Negotiations take place yearly, then?
So who does that?
Do we have an outside?
Yes, we deal with a consultant that negotiates our communication towers that's on the water tower. So we have two locations there, and they are familiar with this type of structure with the monopole. And they are the individuals that we would start with and then finalize whatever terms with our city attorney's office.
Would that basically open up, you might say, a can of worms for other companies to come also to put poles up?
So, Mr. Chair, no. The city can choose case by case whether it wants to do this. You're approving one, you have no obligation to approve any further ones. And then to answer your other question, how long it would last, that we negotiated, but it's common for these types of agreements to last multiple decades because it's a pretty significant investment in infrastructure.
Long range.
Yeah, we've done that before, you know.
Yeah, okay. And location, location. This is a baseball field, isn't it? A park?
It's in the southern portion of that, of that Little League area. It's actually the reservoir water pumping station land, the city's land.
Yes, I'm aware where it is. Thank you.
Are you, by me, that's me. Are you able to check out other cities, like our neighbors? Like, what is Greenfield paying for getting?
Yeah, our consultant will have.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Good competitive pricing.
Been moved and seconded. To hold. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion adjourned. Motion to adjourn.
It's a second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now we go to. I was looking for it.
She wants to do this one, too.
Yes, we called the order, or no?
Yes.
Item 36.
Called the meeting. The order, all the members present?
Exactly. I'll take that.
West New York.
Yes.
Okay, we have item 2021-0670, resolution for special use permit for some of the old convenience stores that just should be located at 8404 West Greenwood Avenue and 1359 South 84th Street.
What number are you on? No, you're on, that was 31. You want to be on 36, next page.
I mean, I lost.
Yeah, we're on 36, we're supposed to be on.
36 should be, right?
Yep.
No.
Let me see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Oh, you got it, no?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So it's item 36, 2021-1778, 2021-23, new operator license for general sales clerk application for Donald Bernard. Is he here? Donald?
Yes, sir.
So you have any previous records or anything?
Call.
Come over here, come forward. Is he here?
Yeah, the last incident I had was 1993.
Where, where are you going to be working?
Just filling in on JD's Pub and Grill, the old Johnny Hammers on 60th and Lincoln.
So we have a clear record, never had any?
Not since 1993, when I was in my twenties.
So, Mr. Chair, I just had a.
Is it authority killer?
I've got a note about a 2019 disorderly conduct.
Oh, the ticket, yeah.
Yeah, it says it was a ticket. But other than that, it looks like nothing else within the last at least 11 years. There's an ODI from 2010, but the community doesn't consider it a problem, so. Actually, I don't have any objection on this one.
Any questions from any?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor of the motions?
Aye.
Opposed? The aye, haven't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to wait this long, eh?
You should be able to pick it up tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Or you can take up your license.
Have you been talking to Gina about it?
Yeah, I got her email the other day regarding all of this, so I know Gina.
Reach out to her, and she'll get you the license.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
So the next one, we have Adriana, I mean, it's 2021, 1379, new operator license for general sales clerk application for Ariana McCrady.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ariana, where are you going to be working?
Uncle Fester's on 5906 West Burnham.
West Burnham, okay. Do you have any previous offenses, records?
I do have two DUIs, but I just want to let you guys know that I am not drinking, and I am not allowed to drink behind the bar at my job either, nor am I driving.
When did that occur?
The second one was July of 2020, and I haven't drank since the incident.
The previous one?
18 or 19.
Okay. Any questions from the committee members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there a rehabilitation period that you have to?
I am in, I am in therapy, and I'm taking care of all of that right now. I could get you that information if you need it. And like I said, as well as I am not driving or drinking.
You won't be working in a bar?
I will be working in a bar, but I, we don't, we're not allowed to drink behind the bar.
I see.
Yes, so I'm 100% sober.
Is it your chair?
Yes.
So just to clarify, I've got a note that there's actually a pending case. Is that true?
Yes, I do get sentenced on the 2nd of December for the second one, but I'm already taking my classes and my therapy and stuff ahead of schedule.
But you haven't completed the course?
No, it is almost finished. I probably have another month or two of my therapy, which is what they're indicating that I need to do for the courts.
Yeah, thank you for your information, but I really, if you still got to follow through yet, you have to appear in court, right?
Yes. I've pled guilty, I just, they're not sentencing me until December 2nd.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I prefer, I believe, the proper procedure would be to hold until then, you know.
It's up to you to decide from the committee's standpoint how you want to handle it. If you want to wait until then, you could postpone it. If you believe that at that point in time rehabilitation is done, then you could approve at that date. Depends how the committee wants to.
Well, it's up to the.
Well, I'd like to see, after the court date, you said you had something you could show us if we wanted to, like your rehabilitation or whatever. So I'd like to see that both at the same time, the, whatever the court decided and what you've been doing for rehabilitation.
Okay.
And I don't know quite when that next meeting is. Would it be the next council meeting?
It'll be December 14.
But I know that.
When's your hearing? December 2nd, you said?
December 2nd.
So she would have that done?
Right, by 12 days, yeah.
Yeah. And then you, did you say you may not have your class done before then?
The impact people just told me that I needed to go to counseling, which is what I'm doing right now. That's what impact suggested that I needed to do in order for my courts and everything. So there was no other.
So it wasn't the normal course that they send people to when they've got a drunk driving offense, correct? That's what you're saying?
As far as I know, I'm not entirely sure.
Do you know if this is an AODA course? Is that the word, the letters they use?
I don't think so. I do have some paperwork in my bag, if you'd like to see it. I did bring it with me just in case.
Take a look, just to make sure. But yes, the next.
Is there a valid driver's license on this one?
We're both at this time, but that would make sense given the pending nature of the case.
Yeah.
Because you are administrative.
I would agree we postpone it.
Yeah.
I tend to agree that we should postpone it until she's completed whatever she has to.
And that's what I'm looking right now to see what else we've got.
Yeah, I'm going to go look at it.
How did you get here tonight?
I was dropping off. My dad drove me.
Now, this is, this is the.
The treatment that was put for my case, correct? Yeah, okay.
Okay. And you have a date on this treatment?
I've been going since probably the 1st of November 8th, maybe.
I should say a completion date.
It does say on there it's two to three months recommended. My counselor, my therapist herself, will decide whether.
Well, on thirty-six, we're supposed to be on.
Thirty-six should be, right?
Yep.
No.
Let me see. Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Oh, you got it, no?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So it's item thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one seventeen seven eight, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-three, new operator license for general sales clerk application for Donald Bernard. Is he here, Donald?
Yes, sir.
So you have any previous records or anything?
Call.
Come over here, come forward. Is he here?
Yeah, the last incident I had was nineteen ninety-three.
Where, where are you going to be working?
Just filling in on J D's Pub and Grill, the old Johnny Hammers on Sixteenth and Lincoln.
So we have a clear record, never had any?
Not since nineteen ninety-three, when I was in my twenties.
So, Mr. Chair, I just had a.
Is it authority killer?
I've got a note about a twenty-nineteen disorderly conduct.
Oh, the ticket, yeah.
Yeah, it says it was a ticket. But other than that, it looks like nothing else within the last at least eleven years. There's an O W I from twenty-ten, but the disorderly conduct is considered nonviolent, so. This one, actually, I don't have any objection on this one.
Any questions from any?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor of the motions?
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, haven't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to wait this long, eh?
You should be able to pick it up tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Or you can take up your license.
Have you been talking to Gina about it?
Yeah, I got her email the other day regarding all of this, so, I know Gina.
Reach out to her and she'll get you the license.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
So the next one, we have Adriana, I mean, it's twenty-twenty-one thirteen seven nine, new operator license for general sales clerk application for Ariana McCrady.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ariana, where are you going to be working?
Uncle Fester's on fifty-nine oh six West Burnham.
West Burnham, okay. Do you have any previous offenses, records?
I do have two DUIs, but I just want to let you guys know that I am not drinking and I am not allowed to drink behind the bar at my job either, nor am I driving.
When did that occur?
The second one was July of twenty-twenty, and I haven't drank since the incident.
The previous one?
Eighteen or nineteen.
Okay. Any questions from the committee members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Is there a rehabilitation period that you have to?
I am in, I am in therapy and I'm taking care of all of that right now. I could get you that information if you need it. And like I said, as well as I am not driving or drinking.
You won't be working in a bar?
I will be working in a bar, but I, we don't, we're not allowed to drink behind the bar.
I see.
Yes, so I'm a hundred percent sober.
Is it your chair?
Yes.
So, just to clarify, I've got a note that there's actually a pending case, is that true?
Yes, I do get sentenced on the second of December for the second one, but I'm already taking my classes and my therapy and stuff ahead of schedule.
But you haven't completed the course?
No, it is almost finished. I probably have another month or two of my therapy, which is what they're indicating that I need to do for the courts.
Yeah, thank you for your information, but I really, if you still got to follow through yet, you have to appear in court, right?
Yes. I've pled guilty, I just, they're not sentencing me until December second.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I prefer, I believe, the proper procedure would be to hold until then, you know?
It's up to you to decide from the committee's standpoint how you want to handle it. If you want to wait until then, you could postpone it. If you believe that at that point in time rehabilitation is done, then you could approve at that date, depends how the committee wants to.
Well, it's up to the.
Well, I'd like to see, after the court date, you said you had something you could show us if we wanted to, like your rehabilitation or whatever. So I'd like to see that both at the same time, the, whatever the court decided and what you've been doing for rehabilitation.
Okay.
And I don't know quite when that next meeting is. Would it be the next council meeting?
It'll be December, December fourteenth.
But I know that.
When's your hearing, December second, you said?
December second.
So she would have that done?
Right, by twelve days, yeah.
Yeah. And then you, did you say you may not have your class done before then?
The impact people just told me that I needed to go to counseling, which is what I'm doing right now. That's what impact suggested that I needed to do in order for my courts and everything. So there was no other.
So it wasn't the normal course that they send people to when they've got a drunk driving offense, correct? That's what you're saying?
As far as I know, I'm not entirely sure.
Do you know if this is an AODA course? Is that the word, the letters they use?
I don't think so. I do have some paperwork in my bag, if you'd like to see it. I did bring it with me, just in case.
Take a look, just to make sure. But yes, the next.
Is there a valid driver's license on this one?
We're both at this time, but that would make sense, given the pending nature of the case.
Yeah.
Because you are administrative.
I would agree we postpone it.
Yeah.
I tend to agree that we should postpone it until she's completed, whatever she has to.
And that's what I'm looking right now to see what else we've got.
Yeah, I'm gonna go look at it.
How did you get here tonight?
I was dropping off. My dad drove me.
Now, this is, this is the.
The treatment that was put for my case, correct? Yeah, okay.
Okay. And you have a date on this treatment?
I've been going since probably the first of November eighth, maybe?
I should say a completion date?
It does say on there it's two to three months recommended. My counselor, my therapist herself, will decide whether it needs to continue past two months, depending on how far we go.
Okay. What would happen at the second would be AODA would be ordered as well, which is a different, essentially, analysis from a health perspective. But one thing the committee could do is adjourn this until the fourteenth to allow that to take place, see what that order is, we'll see where she's at with the counseling plan there, and then if things go on that date, you could go forward with it. If there's still things pending, the committee could make a decision at that point in time.
I make a motion to hold then until after your court date.
Okay, second.
Only.
Fourteenth.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure it's held to the fourteenth.
Yeah, all in favor of the motion to hold until, after December second?
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, haven't. So if you come to that, it should be no problem to get your license, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, then we have item thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one thirteen sixty-two draft, twenty-one, twenty-one license and help committee minutes for the following dates, May fourth, May eighteen, June fourteenth, and October fourth.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, haven't. Thirty-nine is the police department violations service report.
Please, I'm by, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, haven't.
Are you looking for something up for this meeting yet? Okay, so, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, haven't.
Are you looking for something up for this meeting yet? Okay, so, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, haven't. Well, you guys are so good, you know that?
Yeah, we are.
I call the advisory committed to order. May minutes reflect that four members are present, Alderman Christian being excused. First on the agenda is number forty, division ordinance to readjust ward boundaries due to twenty-twenty federal census. I call on our city attorney to explain a little bit about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry to have done this to you, but the map is directly behind you.
Okay.
He's getting a good spot.
Sorry about that.
What?
You're in a good spot, Vic.
This isn't very good. It's planning on my part. So this is, this is a chance for the committee to look at what the committee the whole looked at last time. Nothing has changed, other than I just drew the wards in. Let's see if I can, I don't like how this is sized weirdly, but I'll just go from east to west, just because the numbers go that way. You can see wards one, two, three, four, and five would combine to make the first district. Would it help to turn, Tony, we want to grab that?
Can you, yeah.
We'll switch that one, this one, sorry. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that helps.
So, one, two, three, four, and five would combine to form District One. What effectively does is District One only loses these two rows of residences right here. Those shift to District Four. Otherwise, District One remains identical. District Two, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, and that is very close to what it was as well, except District Two loses a few properties here to District Four, and then actually gains a few properties here that were in District Four.
Kale, I thought we were going to Lincoln Avenue straight down, about what the decision was.
Yeah, so that was the goal. And the problem with it, with the county drew their line, is in order to go right down Lincoln like that, District Two had to expand west of Eighty-Fourth Street. I can show you the other map. The wards are very much an administrative thing for the clerk's office, you care much more about districts, so I can go straight to the districts. So this was what the committee the whole last time looked on with approval, and you'll see that only a portion of District Two had to come south, because if this was in District Four, everything south of Lincoln was in Four, and everything west of Eighty-Fourth was in Three, District Two would not be large enough. It had to gain a certain amount of population. So this was one solution. The other solution, if you recall, was actually a few properties west of Eighty-Fourth jumped on, it had this little thing that poked out, and then this went straight across.
Right, yeah. What, with that little jig-jag we've got there for District Four and Two by Lincoln on the corner there, down, up there, yeah.
Yep.
If that all went into District Two and it was straight up, how much difference are we looking at in?
I can do that right now, and it actually creates a pretty significant difference. It's pretty.
Oh, it does?
It's pretty wild how just a few blocks will flip it, because it not only takes away from them and adds to the others, so it's sort of a.
Right now, we're closer to around twelve thousand for each one, right?
Yeah, so if you look at the populations down here, you'll see we're doing very, doing very well with consistent populations. But if you go like this, if I move these to District Two to make it straight across, you see all of them in District Two jumps way up to twelve, twenty, two forty, the highest one, and District Four now drops to the lowest by, you know, two hundred less, three hundred less than Two.
Gotcha.
So it's, just those few properties make a pretty big difference. So that's why I would recommend trying to get them evened out. So here, they're close to, still a little bigger. If you go like that, though, you'll see Two and Four as close as they can get to equal, and this is the way it was before, the draft that the committee the whole saw, this is what it was.
The lines are fairly even, though, still.
This is the one spot that became tricky because of the way the county drew its line.
Yeah, right there, sixty-eight, I believe, to sixty-five, Lincoln to Art, to Art.
Yeah, so that, this is where it got, basically, one could only, one was too big, and it could only lose from this area of the city, otherwise it crossed the county line, and it would have been at least eight hundred persons swing, and then it threw everything off because you did that.
So did they move the supervisory, no, I'm sorry, not supervisory. Can you lay over real quick the state representative lines over that?
Let's see here. The current state representative lines, let's see.
Because that's not completed yet, correct?
Correct, so it's going to just be, congressional should show it. So, yeah, I can label it, but this is your old ones. So the blue lines are going to be your congressional lines.
Can you use them?
No, no, where are they? Oh, here we go. I thought they were black, I did this before, but let's see what it comes up with. Okay, so it's the, it's the bluish teal color, I guess.
So this would be our state representatives currently, correct?
Correct, currently, and which is going to be redrawn.
For Wisconsin, not for federal.
Correct.
Okay. And that's, I'm just wondering if that's moved at all?
It wouldn't move now, nothing has changed that, on that line yet.
Okay, that's one that they're still debating, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is showing your two thousand and eleven enacted lines.
Okay. I didn't know if you had the temporary one that they were talking about yet, that's why I was asking.
Let's see here.
Because I wasn't sure if they had, if they had gotten anything clarified or not.
No, so this, this is our current, I think I was actually showing you the federal one, now that I looked at it. So now I'm showing you the state one, and you see where the, these maroon lines are going, that shows where the districts cut through, and they remain the same today, but they do need to be redrawn at some point in time by the state.
Okay.
The supervisors basically are the same, or has something changed with them?
I don't know if the supervisors that currently represent West Dallas are still in their same districts, but there is only, it's fifteen and sixteen are the only ones that cross the city, and this green line right here is the, is the line that splits them.
I see.
Now, the reason that we don't have to worry about the state ones, which I didn't at all worry about, is because they're going to have to be redrawn, and they're going to go all over the place anyway. Back in two thousand and eleven, the state actually drew their lines before redistricting took place, so the cities did have to consider that, but we don't have to consider that, the state will just come by and pick up whatever wards we approve.
Okay.
If they're nice.
So potentially, so they won't split wards?
They shouldn't. If they do, there's a mechanism in place for us to address it.
Reason I'm asking is because I actually live right one block on a border from a supervisory thing, and it runs like really weird, it doesn't run like along Seventy-Sixth Street, or it jig-jogs at Seventy-Fourth.
I think you're talking about this one right here.
Yes, Seventy-Fourth and Rogers.
Yeah, so, back in two thousand and eleven, they drew, they drew their own lines entirely independently without anything. And so whatever lines they drew were their own making, they did not have to follow any wards, didn't follow anything. So I don't know why they picked that zigzag pattern, but there's a lot of that around the state.
And they're trying to avoid that now because they want to have the same wards voting potentially, right? That's what the, the goal is?
From the state's perspective?
Yeah.
I think there are a lot of varying goals from the various.
Reason I'm asking is I get a number of people contact me when they're voting in the wards that split like the, you know, the district that's split like this, and they're going, well, you know, who's my people that, that I'm currently being represented by? And I always have to go look at this and go, well, you're here for this, but you're here for this, and you're here, you know, that type of thing, so.
Yeah, and that's why my, frankly, that's why the, the way that the state did it in two thousand and eleven was, was bad form, because it's not how the law was written, it's not how it's ever been done in the prior fifty years. So this time around, though, it'll be difficult because there's a split Democrat, Republican at the state side, so it's unlikely there's going to be an agreement there, it's going to be probably drawn by the courts, but the benefit to that is that they're likely to follow the existing wards that every community creates.
Okay.
Just because it's going to be easier for them from a modeling perspective, from the court side of things. You won't get these really jagged lines unless the city chooses to draw a ward with jagged lines like that.
I see.
Which is why, from that perspective, it is important to know where the wards are. Just, you don't want to see this map anymore, or do you want to look at the ward map quick?
Yeah, if you got a second, show it.
Here, actually, I'll do this, just because I can bring it up then later. I won't be able to change anything, but at least we can view it. So that's why I created the wards in a way where it doesn't have those jagged lines to the extent possible. And then when the state comes by and draws, you won't have these weird situations anymore.
Okay.
So as you can see, I tried really hard to follow main roads.
Yeah, they're real.
And railroad.
Square off.
As squared off as I could get them.
Yeah.
And the only time it's not squared off is when I had to do something because of the district was that shape, like right here and right here, but everything else, follow the railroad, follow Sixtieth, follow Greenfield, you know. So when the state comes through West Dallas, the reason that the wards look like this is because I want them to follow the ward lines and create nice smooth lines like we have for our automatic districts.
Okay.
I think you did a fine job, I commend you.
Thanks.
You did a good job.
On all the work that you did for this.
So I make a motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and, thank you. Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
I lost faith in you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
And then the automatic one is next.
Yes, I know. Now we have number forty-one, ordinance to restrict the boundaries of automatic districts. Again, Alderman, city attorney.
So because you set the wards the way you did, this is how the automatic districts would look if you approved the amendment as proposed on the agenda, by combining the numbers in the same sequence as we currently have, this is what the ultimate result would be.
And they are really, really close in population.
Try to get very close to, I left one, the smallest, because it's going to gain the most people after April first.
Correct.
But that's why it's the, I'm the smallest.
Which will then take it up to.
An average.
An average of everybody else.
An amendment should start?
Pardon?
We should have an amendment, you are indicating?
No, so, for one here, the, it's, it's left a little under average because if you look at the populations here, this is the west, and this is Sona, and as you can see, we know there's more than twenty-four people living at the west now.
Yeah.
But as of April first, there probably wasn't, and so that's why one will grow naturally with this, and although you don't draw maps for future residential, we can probably expect this is going to be also residentially impacted, but so will other areas in the city, too. So the biggest one is, we know this was underreporting at the time, that this was just shortly after the, the effective date of April fourth of twenty-twenty, and so that essentially balances one out with the rest of the district.
I see. Should all this ordinance pass, when would this be in place?
It's effective January first, as far as the automatic districts and the wards. However, the law, the way it's written, is that anyone who's in a current elected term, the, the regular term continues until that term expires. So even though this will be the districts automatically as of January first, it doesn't matter until April of twenty-twenty-four, when there's a new election in the city.
Angelito, that doesn't affect you, right?
Oh, thank you for clarifying that.
So even though, like, for example, I think, is it, is this Rainbow, Rainbow Park, I think, had the largest, would have the largest transition, this is all District Three right now, and it would switch to District Five, and it was three thousand people.
Right.
So this area would be, for the next two and a half, three years, we're represented technically by District Three, older persons. However, in the future, after twenty-twenty-four, we're represented by District Five, older persons.
Right, okay.
So a motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded, any further discussion, people? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you.
Good evening, we will call the common council back to order, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Nine present, one excused.
We have a quorum. I will begin with the Administration and Finance Committee. Ask the clerk to read that out.
There's a request to take items 22 and 23 separately.
Okay.
The Administration and Finance Committee recommended adoption of item 17, 17 through 21.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of that portion of the committee report.
Thank you, Alderman Haas, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero, one excused.
Motion carries.
And then Mayor Devine, I move for approval of items 22 and 23.
Thank you, Alderman, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries.
One excused.
Thank you, sorry, jump the gun. Public Works Committee.
The Public Works Committee recommended passage of item 24, adoption of items 25 and 26, and holding item number 27.
I move in accordance of the committee report, Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman Roat, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries, thank you. Then we have the Safety and Development Committee.
There's been a request to take items 28 and 33 separately. The Safety and Development Committee recommended adoption of 29, 30, and 32. Passage of 31 and 34 was approved as amended, removing the Hub Chrysler site, 30 Star Star South 108th Street, and Able Distribution 1650 South 108th Street, and approval of item 25.
35.
35, sorry, it's after 9 o'clock.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of the committee report on those items.
Thank you, Alderman Lysick, any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries. And we have item 28.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of item 28.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Haas, I'm sorry, Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye, again.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed, and one excused.
Motion carries, thank you, and then we have item 33.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of item 33.
Thank you. Discussion on item 33? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
No.
Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Seven in favor, two opposed, one excused.
Motion carries. Thank you, now we have the License and Health Committee.
Mr. Mayor, we have item 36, which has been approved. 37, we're holding it until the next meeting. And then, item 38, we move for approval, and 39 to be placed on file. Mr. Mayor, based on the recommendations of the License and Health Committee members, I move for approval.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale, any discussion? There is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, and then we'll go to the Advisory Committee.
The Advisory Committee recommended passage of items 40 and 41.
Mayor Devine, I move approval of the committee report, please.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve, is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
One question came up on this, on item number 41. When does this take effect, immediately? I mean, as soon as you sign it? Next door. Tony Decker?
So it is effective technically January 1st, 2022 by statute. However, all current elected officials will serve out the remainder of their term.
I understand that, but, so strictly speaking, starting on January, the upcoming January, we're going to have some minor changes to our boundaries, and as far as who we represent, businesses, properties, residents. Not that it matters, I mean.
Legally, your current constituencies are who you're going to represent until 2024. As of 2024, you will represent your new constituencies, or whoever's elected in those positions would represent the new boundaries. So it'll be new wards, so for all elections after January 1, like at the county level or state level, the wards will be established for those new elections. However, for people on the council, your constituents are still the same who elected you in 2020 until 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
All right, Kale, I'm going to put a little finer point on this. I understand what you say, and I think I get it. So there's a portion of District 3 that is going into District 5. After January 1st, 2022, I receive a constituent complaint from someone that's in that portion of District 3. Are they, am I their alderman, or is it still part of District 3? Is, 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 are Suzette and Dana their alderman, elder person?
I will respond with the even finer point. From now until 2024, if anyone wants to recall you, it's going to be your current constituencies who would vote on that recall. It would not be the new maps who vote in that manner, it would be the old maps who would vote in that manner. So that is how I'd respond to you, in that your obligation is to your current constituencies until 2024. At that point in time, though, the new automatic districts will be used for the next election.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you.
Send them my way.
Okay, next up, Alderman Roat.
Next up.
What will it say online on the property information where it says you're represented, is when does that change?
Question for IT to figure out.
They're changing it right now, they left it right now.
As soon as I sign it.
It is a little confusing, every 10, every 10 years that this comes around. So it'll be depending on how the city wants to present this information. It might be a good idea on GAS to say current automatic districts, and show the 2020 elected term, 2020 to 2024. You could say then, as of 2024, here's the new districts. I would put both online, just to make sure people are aware. But yes, so it's going to be a matter of IT deciding how to present this information.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I would, I just want to assure all of the other council members that it's the portion of the 5th district that is going to move into the 4th district. If anybody calls me from there, I will be responding to them and treating them as if they're my own constituents, that they deserve, because they will in fact be voting in the next election for older people in the 4th district. So keep that in mind. Respect the district portions that you're getting for the next term.
So, so, over Lysick, so people from.
Alderman Vitale.
I will direct them to you now, see, start from tomorrow.
No, your district doesn't come into mine. The 5th district does. And a good portion of the 4th district goes to the 3rd.
Right.
So there's been some major changes, but just so everyone's aware.
So y'all got to start hanging out at different restaurants.
I've, we've done this in the past, obviously, every 10 years, and I've always treated the new constituents just like they were constituents that voted for me, and I'm sure you will too.
Anybody else?
Mayor Devine?
Okay. Alderman Lysick, we got a vote on this yet?
We do, I thought we did.
Oh. We discussed, unless you want to adjourn. All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, December 14th, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.